Welcome to the City Council's April fifteenth City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with all council members, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, I would like to introduce staff and the city council members present. Vice Mayor Combs, City Council Member Carlton, City Council Member Nash, City Council Member Mueller. The staff present include our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim city attorney, Kara Silver, and our city clerk, Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again, welcome, everyone. Appreciate your patience. I know we're getting a little later start than we had agendas for. So again, thank you for that. For members of the public who are with us, if there is an item on the agenda that you would like to comment on, you should see a little green hand feature. Go ahead and click that hand during the public comment for that item, and you'll be able to open your mics and have you give your timed public comment. It's a three-minute public comment. Mayor Taylor will announce the public comment time for each of the items as that portion comes up. For members of the council, we ask that you remain on your webcams and control your own mics, turning on when you have a question or comment and turning off when that portion has concluded. Staff will be giving presentations as they need to on various agenda items. And again, the mayor will be calling for public comment, and I'll be reviewing this for anyone who joins later in the meeting to use that hand feature to raise your hand if you have a comment. We also do accept comments written in the question field. You should see a little question mark. You can tap that, and we will see that question. I will read it as a public comment to the city council during the public comment period announced by the mayor. And with that, I return the meeting to the mayor, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda is presentations and proclamations. Proclamation recognizing Executive Director of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, Lynn Maderman. Whereas Lynn Maderman is the Executive Director of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, a regional government agency serving Silicon Valley communities in northern Santa Clara County and southern Samatello County. Lynn leads the agency's projects, operations, finances, communications. And whereas the city of Menlo Park is one of the five member agencies of the Creek JPA, and its offices are located in Menlo Park, which has provided Lynn Maderman opportunities to patronize local restaurants and shops downtown and walk-to-meetings at the civic center. And whereas Lynn Maderman started at the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority on August eleventh, two thousand and eight. In his time as Executive Director, the Creek JPA completed the Bay to the Highway one oh one project. The approved, the board unanimously certified the San Francisco Creek upstream of Highway one oh one project, final EIR, approved the project and gave authorization to Lynn to secure the permits, funding, and land rights necessary to build the project. And whereas since Lynn Maderman joined the Creek JPA in two thousand and eight, the authority's capital budget has grown from zero to over ten million dollars in direct public and private grants, and it coordinates another fifty million dollars in project funding by local agencies. And whereas, one of Lynn Maderman's biggest assets in his ability to communicate with elected officials and staff at all levels, residents, and members of the public, Lynn is a great communicator, and his ability to speak to people on so many levels has been a key contributor in the successful completion of the Creek JPA's first major project, the Bay to one oh one, and the certification of the EIR for upstream and continued collaboration among the member agencies and public. And whereas previously Lynn Maderman worked at Stanford University as a consultant to nonprofits, foundations, and the U.S. State Department, and as executive producer of a film on water that was broadcast nationally on PBS. During the Clinton administration, he served as a full-time advisor to the Director of FEMA and as FEMA's representative on two White House task forces. Prior to his work in Washington, Lynn was the Director of Government Affairs for UC Berkeley, and he received degrees in political science and biological sciences from UC Davis. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of Menlo Park, do hereby recognize and gratefully acknowledge Lynn Maderman on his achievements. Ms. Heron, is Lynn on the line? Is Mr. Maderman on the line?
Hi, Mayor Taylor. Yes, we do have Lynn Maderman here. Lynn, I have un-nuded your mic. You can go ahead and address our city council. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and Vice Mayor Combs, and council members. The Menlo Park, over the past dozen years that I've been doing this, the Menlo Park city council members and staff have been enormously helpful to moving our projects forward, projects that build safety and enhance ecosystems and trails and provide an early warning of threats. So, and council members and staff have been enormously supportive of me personally in efforts to try to engage all of our jurisdictions to move forward in that way. So, thank you. Not going very far. I look forward to continuing to serve the people of Menlo Park in a different capacity, and that is running the new agency that deals with flooding and sea level rise for Samatello County as a whole. But again, thank you very much for this recognition. I really appreciate it, and the JPA appreciates all of your support.
Thank you, Mr. Maderman. And I did read the proclamation out of order because we were expecting you to do a presentation as well.
Yes, I am ready to do a presentation as well, if now is a good time. Sorry, yes.
Lynn, this is Judy, the city clerk. I will be clicking through the slides. Just let me know next when you're ready for the next.
Oh, okay. That sounds fine. So, yes, so thank you for having, putting some time on the calendar for this presentation. It's intended to be an update of project activities at the JPA. And I'll start it off with giving some overview of kind of where we're at. I wanted to note that in this slide, the first slide, you know, these images are from the three cities that the JPA serves, and that's Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto. And for people who have not experienced flooding that are in these cities, they're fortunate because there's been a lot of flooding, and it's really impacted some people very negatively. And over the past dozen years, I've done probably hundreds of community presentations, and there's not been one person who has been flooded who said, "We need more time to study the problem." So, we've worked pretty hard to move from studying the problem to solving the problem, and Menlo Park's been an important part of that. So, next slide, Judy. Yeah, so just for people that aren't familiar with the JPA, you can see the San Francisco Peninsula in this image. Judy, you can advance it. The San Francisco Creek is fourteen miles of creek from Searsville Dam west of Highway two eighty to San Francisco Bay. And Judy, do you want to advance it? So Judy, I just ask you, it's not possible for me to share my screen. Is that right? I just think it would be easier, but if that's not an option, that's okay.
Yeah, we are experiencing some technical difficulties when promoting people to sharing screens and losing their audio. So I do apologize for that.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm just trying to create efficiency. So, these are the five agencies that started the JPA in nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-one years ago. The one you see listed closest to Menlo Park to the left is the new agency in Samatello County to deal with flooding and sea level rise issues, the one that I mentioned previously where I'm heading. Okay, Judy. And finally, the shoreline, also fourteen miles, extends from the Palo Alto, Menlo Park, or sorry, Palo Alto Mountain View border to the Menlo Park-Redwood City border, and that's also a part of a big project. All right, Judy, next slide. And I'll ask you to just advance this through this. This shows the floodplains. The creek is the blue line that runs towards the bay. Basically, our first project was from the Bay to Highway one oh one. Our next project in purple is on the other side or upstream or west of Highway one oh one. The objective of that project is to protect against a hundred-year event and remove the creek floodplain, which was the blue areas and the red areas, and leave us with the bay floodplain. And then the other project is on the shoreline, and that's to remove the bay floodplain. The two areas in solid yellow are the first phase of that. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then we also have in the yellow dotted lines areas that we're doing a programmatic look at. Okay, so this is the project. You can go forward, Judy. It's hard to, yeah. So this is the project that we completed, the one that was mentioned in the proclamation. It's called the Beta Highway one oh one project because it starts in the upper right of San Francisco Bay and goes through Highway one oh one and included rebuilding the bridge, the Highway one oh one bridge over the creek. And Judy, you could advance the slide. And this is the project under construction. It was a massive project to widen the creek into the Palo Alto Golf Course. Judy, you can advance the slide. And this is what it looks like now. Those two blue lines within the creek channel is the former width of the creek channel. So you can tell it was significantly widened into the golf course. And, in fact, that PG&E tower that you see right there used to be outside of the channel, and now it's obviously within the channel. So part of it was creating that new concrete foundation, which you can kind of make out at the bottom of it. East Palo Alto's on the left, Palo Alto Golf Course on the right. Judy? Yeah, so these are some of the aspects of the project that are noteworthy. I'll just read the first bullet, which is the primary objective, and that's to protect three miles of shoreline. And this is called shoreline, even though it's within the creek because it's subject to daily tides, against any flow that can reach that area in a sea level ten feet above today's high tide. And that ten feet is important because that's what we're extending for our objective as we go up the shoreline through East Palo Alto into Menlo Park. It was a seventy-seven million dollar project total, and Menlo Park provided for that project eight hundred thousand. So, a lot of the money was from state agencies and PG&E, and of course, you can see about half of it was from local agencies. And it had these other benefits that are listed. Judy? Okay, so now that we've completed the project on the bayside of Highway one oh one, we're focusing our attention upstream of Highway one oh one. And I just wanted to read this because this has, I think, important information, especially for Menlo Park. The initial upstream of Highway one oh one project approach in two thousand and thirteen, so seven years ago, was to provide a hundred-year protection through, by doing work just between Highway one oh one and Pope Chaucer Bridge, essentially. And in public meetings in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, we heard from many that this approach would have too many impacts on the creek in that area. And so that led us to look for a new project that we viewed as achievable and meaningful. Those were the two kind of overarching objectives in my mind. We wanted something that could be built, and we wanted it to be meaningful to the community. And so we developed a two-pronged approach with low impacts on the neighborhood. The first part of that approach is to enable the downstream Middlefield Road Bridge to contain the maximum flow that could get under that bridge. And that's considered a seventy-year event, and coincidentally, that's the event that we had in nineteen ninety-eight. There was a little bit of flooding at Middlefield, but it was street flooding. It didn't enter private properties, as we know. The project would also restore habitat, and it would not preclude additional protection work upstream. So that EIR was certified last September, and construction is anticipated in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. And this was clearly stated in the staff report, in the second paragraph of the staff report for today's meeting, that this is the objective for this project and that there is another project that we hope to commence soon and start an EIR on to do additional protection. And that's number two, and that's protecting people and property against the hundred-year event by detaining floodwaters upstream of Highway two eighty when flows exceed the capacity of Middlefield Bridge and ensure sufficient freeboard to eliminate the requirement for flood insurance. And we anticipate beginning this EIR in two thousand and twenty. Judy? Okay, so the current FEMA floodplains for the three cities are shown in this, in this image. The blue-green areas are the hundred-year floodplains. So properties that have a mortgage in those blue areas are required to buy flood insurance. Areas in brown is the five-hundred-year floodplain, and properties are not required to have flood insurance there. Judy? You can advance the slide, Judy. Yep, thank you. No, back one. Yeah, so what this shows is the areas of the city that would benefit from this upstream project. Areas of Menlo Park are in yellow. Menlo Park has about seven hundred and fifty properties that pay flood insurance, and their premiums are slightly over a million dollars a year, which is about four times the amount that's been paid out from the flood insurance program to Menlo Park properties in the fifty-two years of the program. So in over fifty years, the total payout is one-fourth of what people pay every year in premiums. It's just a really bad return on investment, which is why our objective is to get people out of that program. Judy? This shows the model floodplain of the nineteen ninety-eight event. The yellow circles are the one closest to Highway one oh one, or most downstream, let's say, is Newell Bridge, and then University Avenue Bridge, and then Pope Chaucer Bridge, and then Middlefield Bridge, the four bridges that are upstream, the four vehicular bridges that are upstream. So this is today what the model floodplain looks like during a seventy-year or nineteen ninety-eight event. After the project, Judy, you could advance the slide, and you'll see the floodplain shrink substantially, especially in East Palo Alto. Go ahead, one more time, Judy. Yeah, thank you. So that's what the floodplain would look like after the project is built. The one that was certified, had its EIR certified in September of last year. Okay, next slide. Yep, so this shows what portions of the creek look like and what we appreciate about this creek. And I thought it's worth noting that certain parts of the creek do look like this, and we really value it. And I think a lot of Menlo Park residents kind of see this as what their vision of what the creek looks like. And in parts of the project, and I'll talk about this later, where the idea is to get rid of concrete that's in the channel. This is what the creek looks like now in many areas. Judy, you want to advance? So this area is, on the bottom left, is near Euclid, just downstream, or yeah, just downstream of Euclid. So it's East Palo Alto on the left, Palo Alto on the right. Judy, you can advance the slide. This is the downstream face of the Pope Chaucer Bridge. So this is what it looks like in the channel between Menlo Park on the right and Palo Alto on the left. And essentially, what you have on the bottom-right picture is a concrete culvert. And so there's concrete on the bottom. There's obviously a semicircle of concrete under the bridge. On the left is concrete sacks on the Palo Alto side, and on the right is an extension of the bridge on the Menlo Park side. Judy? And this is what it looks like above there. This is the Pope Chaucer Bridge, and the view right now is on woodland, kind of looking upstream towards the bridge. And the trees that you see growing are growing out of the concrete bridge. And in order to replace the bridge, we need to remove the concrete culvert. And so that's part of the discussion that we have had and will continue to have with Menlo Park, is what needs to be done in order to replace the trees that are lost. Judy? This is what the bridge looked like on the left in two thousand and seventeen, the view from Menlo Park at the top left, and the view from Palo Alto a short time later, as the waters continue to rise. Fortunately, they did not overtop at Pope Chaucer. They did flood in East Palo Alto and Palo Alto downstream. This was February seventh of two thousand and seventeen. And last year, two thousand and nineteen, about fourteen months ago, this was an image of a tree getting stuck at the Pope Chaucer Bridge. And that's one of the issues, is not just there's not enough water that can flow under the bridge, but also debris can get stuck under that bridge and exacerbate the problem. Judy? So, we developed this project. The project starts with replacing the Pope Chaucer Bridge. It starts in concept, in terms of actual construction sequence. That's the last element. But it starts with replacing the bridge and then looking downstream to see what areas would start flooding because of additional flow coming under that bridge. And the areas in green are identified as new areas that we need to widen the channel. And so that's why it says widen creek bottlenecks downstream where new overtopping would occur, and the bank is concrete. All of those areas, what we're removing is concrete. We're not removing vegetation for the heck of it. We're not removing soil banks. We're removing areas that are concrete. Sometimes trees grow out of concrete, as we saw in the previous pictures. And then the other part is there's a wooden parapet extension, that University Avenue that goes about four hundred feet. We're going to turn that into a permanent structure of the same size and match the Palo Alto top of bank. There's a separate project at Newell Road Bridge to replace that bridge. It's a project of the city of Palo Alto, and it's critical that that happened before we replaced the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Judy? That protects against the seventy-year event. So this is what the existing bridge looks like, and this is what the new bridge would look like. I think that's a picture is about one to two years after construction in terms of just the vegetation growing back in, things like that. But this is what the design firm anticipates new bridge looking like. Judy? And this is aerial view of the same image. Yeah, again, one to two years after construction. Menlo Park, you see Pope Street on the left. Menlo Park is on the left of this image, Palo Alto on the right. And Judy, you could advance it. What will come up here in the areas that are orange or yellow is the areas of roadwork, of new roadway essentially that would be constructed as part of the project. So because, you know, it's basically a new roadway, the approaches to the roadway for just a few feet from each of the intersections will be impacted as well. Judy? Okay. This, other elements of widening, this is the area downstream in East Palo Alto. It's a large concrete terrace. It's about four hundred feet of creek length, and that would be removed and replaced with a natural creek bank. The image at the bottom is what we anticipate building, which is what Stanford did far upstream in the creek to create kind of a natural look. All right, Judy? This is what the widening looks like down on the picture on the left. That's behind a Palo Alto home. This is an area that needs to be widened. You could see, hopefully you could see the image that the sacked concrete is starting to fail at the bottom. This is about fifty-year-old sacked concrete, and it's starting to crumble anyway. And so essentially, what we would do is take that sacked concrete and eliminate it and create either a treatment wall or sheet pile wall to increase the width of the channel at the bottom and at the same time, improve fish habitat in the channel itself. Judy, you could advance the slide, and you'll see the bottom right advance and the wall and the widening area. That's what it would look like in the future. All right, Judy, next slide. So this upstream detention is the subject of the next EIR, which we hope to start in two thousand and twenty, and that's to take our seventy-year protection project to a hundred-year protection project. The Highway two eighty you see runs through the slide there, and you see Alpine Road labeled, and then the upper-left Sand Hill Road. So we're talking about Stanford property. Let's call it, some of the areas called Jasper Ridge Biological Preserve. And you see Searsville Dam and Reservoir at the left. And then there are two other sites that are in green, a former plant nursery site and Web Ranch, that are potential basins that basically take flow from large, when there's a big storm, a lot of flow in the creek, would take flow out of the creek into these basins temporarily, and hours later, when the storm passes, return the flow into the creek in a way that can be managed so that there's not flooding downstream. That's the concept here. And the EIR will also look at adding freeboard downstream to eliminate the flood insurance requirement. Basically, the more we capture upstream, the less freeboard downstream and vice versa. Now, I have to say, some in this community have said, "Just do work upstream. Just do upstream detention. It's not in my backyard. It's something that can easily be done that we don't have to deal with." And we've had a pretty consistent response to that. As compared to the projects, initial project that we're planning on starting, it does not make sense to do this first or to only look at this. And there are several reasons for that. One is that it would take longer and cost more to do this. The second reason is that during large storms, a basin would fill up and then potentially be useless. If the storm stalls over the Santa Cruz Mountains and the basin is full, then all of the water then goes downstream, and it's no longer captured upstream, and then you have flooding. If you increase the capacity downstream, you don't have that problem. And then finally, even if we were to build all three basins, meaning Searsville Reservoir, rebuild that, and the former plant nursery site, and the Web Ranch, which are the only three sites that are feasible, that can actually capture the water, it would not eliminate the flood insurance requirement downstream. We cannot get enough storage to eliminate the flood insurance requirement. So for those reasons, we decided a two-phased approach is better and actually achieve our objectives. Judy? Okay. Turn to the shoreline project briefly. This is the kind of overall expanse. Mountain views on the far right of the image, Redwood City in the far left. And this, all these colored lines are different reaches, so-called, of the project, different areas of the project. It's called the Safer Bay Project. And again, its objective is to protect the communities against a sea level ten feet above today's high tide. The very far left, that pink line and the yellow line, is right at Marsh Road. And I wanted to mention that we're talking with the city Menlo Park staff and about the Bedwell Bayfront Project for both that reach of those of the pink and yellow lines, but also the orange line next to it, and just how this project can and should intersect with that. And there's also opportunities to collaborate with Redwood City so that we don't just build a flood protection structure that ties into the Marsh Road on-ramp, but we actually continue to go up the shoreline, which is good public policy, rather than kind of cutting off one part of a community or Redwood, one part of Menlo Park potentially, or Redwood City from this project, whatnot. Reaches two and three, which are the orange or red lines next to it, essentially from Marsh Road to the Facebook Headquarters Campus, those reaches have the potential to also help the Billhaven neighborhood. And I know that there's, from city staff, there's been an issue that's come up in terms of residents being, or properties being kind of put back into a FEMA floodplain, and that's a concern. And so that's the area of work that would assist with that issue. So this is the overall picture, and there are two areas of this project that we're focusing on first. Judy, could you advance the slide, please? So those two bright blue dashed lines, the one to the upper left is in Menlo Park, and it's north of Highway eighty-four around the PG&E substation, and that is to enable restoration of the former salt ponds. And the one kind of below that to the right is in East Palo Alto, and it connects into the red lines, which are a creek project that we finished, and it literally connects into them, into that former project, completed project, and it goes up the East Palo Alto shoreline. Judy? So this is just a little bit on those two elements. The upper-left image, you see the completed creek project. That's at the Friendship Bridge, and where the purple line of the creek levee ends by that pump station, that little structure right outside to the creek channel to the left, the yellow line continues on along the East Palo Alto shoreline. It would eliminate about ninety percent of East Palo Alto from the FEMA floodplain of the bay. And at the bottom left, you And in the bottom left, you see that it would protect about 1,600 properties. And the Site B levee in Menlo Park would restore those salt ponds. I mentioned that earlier. Judy? This is what the Menlo Park site looks like from drone video recently. And Highway 84 is on the left, the former salt ponds are on the right. And the picture in the middle has the PG&E substation. And the picture on the right is to the west of the substation, as you head towards Facebook, let's say, from the substation. And what you can see is that Highway 84 and the substation have no levees around them. During king tides now, there's water that sometimes gets onto the substation and water that comes up to the frontage road in Menlo Park to the highway. And so part of this project certainly to eliminate that, both the nuisance flooding and the sea level rise, the long-term impacts. Judy? Yeah, so I think this is the last slide. And this just shows kind of the various complicated issues at Highway 84. I wanted to say that I was on the, I've been on the project management team of a MTC project with Caltrans looking at the Dumbarton Approach in this area of Menlo Park. And it's going to come out in May with some recommendations. Or, yeah, I guess recommended alternatives. It's not going to have strong recommendations, but it's going to discuss the alternatives and potential paths forward. And so we've been working with them. One of the things we're looking at in this, in terms of the salt pond, former salt pond restoration, you see that purple arrow is we're looking at different alternatives for where to put what's called a horizontal levee or an ecotone levee, which has different habitat zones on the slope of a levee. And that's good both in terms of protecting the levee, but it's also good in terms of different habitat zones for species. So that's a kind of an interesting feature that we're pursuing. Judy? And that's the presentation. So I welcome questions and comments from council members and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matterman, for your presentation. Are there any follow-up questions from the council? Councilmember Carlton?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I was the alternate and sat in quite a few of your meetings. And you've always been very clear. And I've always appreciated your leadership with the creek. As we've moved forward. I just have a little question. What happens to Web Ranch?
I missed part of that. What happens to?
Web Ranch?
What happens to Web Ranch?
Are they using some of their land in the solution? I noticed they were called out in the map.
Yeah. So where part of the Web Ranch site is in the area that I showed on the map. And that is the current U-Pic Farm, where, you know, people can go and pay a little bit of money and go out there with their families and pick berries and whatnot. So the idea is that if that is a feasible site for a detention basin, essentially, the operations of the ranch could continue. It would just be about 10 feet below where it is today. Is that essentially, it's hard to think of it in these terms perhaps when you're there now, but Web Ranch is at a lower elevation than the hills around it. And it would be at about a 10 feet below where it is today. And it would still be this kind of bowl right there. And we anticipate that the lease that Web Ranch has for that facility could continue.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much for your leadership. I've always enjoyed working with.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Are there any other questions from the council? Ms. Herron, Vice Mayor Combs?
Council.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, Mr. Matterman, how are you this evening? I just wanted to ask. I didn't hear it in the presentation. Where is the current status of the flood wall discussion?
Flood wall discussion? So in the project that was, for the EIR that was certified in September, the one that we're pursuing permits on right now, there aren't flood walls in that project. As I mentioned, the only thing resembling a wall that's part of the project is replacing the wooden, it's a parapelic extension at University Avenue Bridge with a structure that's of similar size. And that's University of Manhattan. So for that project, there's no flood walls that are being contemplated. For the next phase of a project, one of the objectives is to get people out of the floodplain. And so I can't say exactly right now. We haven't started the EIR. We haven't started design. I can't say right now, but it's possible that there will be alternatives in that one that include two-foot walls to provide freeboard. But I, so I just want to put that out there that this may come in the future. But that would be the subject of a different EIR that would come before, you know, the council and JPA Board and the public meetings and the whole bit. And we're not anticipating any walls for that project in Menlo Park, anyway.
Great. That's what I, and I think you remember my discussions with you in the past on the position that we were taking on flood wall. So I appreciate that and just wanted to clarify that for the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Herron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor Taylor, I did not receive any public comment on this. I don't see any raised hands, but we'll give it maybe another five seconds for any members of the public who wish to raise their hand for a public comment on item F2 Creek JPA Project Update Presentation.
While we're waiting, can I chime in, Mayor, if it's okay? Yeah, well, I just wanted to say I have been the city council representative to the JPA for over a year now, since I joined the council and have appreciated working with Lynn and wish him all the best in his new role and have no doubt that all of the residents of San Mateo County will benefit from his expertise. I will say that there are still, you know, the EIR for the upstream Pope Chaucer Project has been approved by the JPA Board. There are still lots of discussion to be had regarding the creek. The Noel Bridge, which is exclusively Palo Alto project, has to be replaced before the Pope Chaucer Bridge is to be replaced. And again, we know that we're entering into, because of COVID-19, very constrained times as far as financial resources for governmental agencies. And so these will be major things to look at going forward. It's also worth pointing out that the current approved EIR project is the subject of a lawsuit from a Menlo Park resident who sees it as piecemeal because it doesn't include an upstream project. I and other members of the JPA believe that there is value in this project alone without the upstream project. And therefore, it's not piecemealing. With that being said, the upstream project, the upstream of Pope Chaucer is going to be another challenge. Stanford is a key part of that and will need to be a key partner. And to this point, to date, has not been willing or interested in being a partner. And so that's another Herculean task that will have to be addressed in the years ahead, how we proceed with that project with what is now opposition, or at least certainly not a willingness to cooperate from Stanford. So these are, so I think Lynn has accomplished a great deal in his time on leading the JPA. And the downstream project is a great, great accomplishment. But there are still lots of hard issues and discussions to be had in the years ahead. And I speak of this again as the city council representative to the JPA as a resident of the Willows, who is most directly impacted. And as someone who pays flood insurance, which is double my own homeowner's insurance. And so I, and so this is not an academic issue for me. But again, all that being said, I appreciate Lynn coming and walking us through. I thought it was important that the council and Menlo Park residents got a full breadth of where the JP stands with this project. So at the time when we first proposed the idea of Lynn coming, you didn't know that it would sort of be a swan song for him. But, yeah, I think it's really important that we take a moment and recognize Lynn's accomplishment, but also be really wide-eyed about some of the difficult discussions that have to be had in the future.
If I could say, thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, for those comments. Maybe I'll add a little bit to the Stanford piece, if you don't mind, Mayor. Is that okay?
No, I don't mind because that was going to be my question for you, just about moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that we have had many, many, many conversations with Stanford over the years. And those conversations in terms of using upstream, using potential sites on Stanford land or upstream detention basins, floodwater basins, has accelerated considerably. In January of this year, the JPA wrote a letter with an access agreement and stating exactly what we needed. This was essentially a similar letter we wrote over a year before. Stanford responded to that with a draft access agreement. And we are now looking at that. And we'll have a response for Stanford. So the conversation is moving forward. It's slow. It's not just slow because of COVID. It's slow because this is kind of the MO that we've been presented with from Stanford for years. But I think it's fair to say that we are making progress in that conversation. And we will have access. And the reason we need access is because CEQA requires us to do a thorough evaluation of impacts. And so we need to have access to that land. And Vice Mayor Combs has been very outspoken in our need to have access in order to comply with CEQA and been really pushing both the JPA and Stanford on this, you know, which is great. So it's a story that's not yet completely written. And it's one that we're pursuing in terms of conversation and looking at all options on the table to compel Stanford in this way. And we think we have good options on that.
Thank you, Mr. Matterman. I have a follow-up question regarding the, and I'm not sure if I'm saying, giving it the right name, the Resiliency Project, the one that wrapped up, I think, at the beginning of this month, that we'll be making some recommendations.
So are you referring to the one that focuses in on where Highway 84 enters the Dumbarton Bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that one is wrapping up in May. And I mentioned that briefly before. Basically, they're going to be recommending short-term options and long-term options. And the short-term options are to deal with flooding that occurs today or the threat during an extreme tide or with a very small amount of sea level rise flooding that would occur. And the long-term options are to deal with a greater amount of sea level rise, which we anticipate. And so I believe that someone from MTC, or the city has talked with someone from MTC about coming and presenting those alternatives when the report is done, which I believe is mid-May, but I don't know for sure. I've been involved with the project, but I'm not running it. So I don't know exactly kind of when the final report will come out. But those options do certainly intersect with our plans considerably. And we've certainly been pushing that project to consider alternatives that solve, consider alternatives that solve big problems. We want big solutions to this and not just kind of a Band-Aid approach because there are going to have to be a bunch of changes to that part of the shoreline as the seas rise beyond, you know, one feet, two feet. It's going to be a substantial issue. And so we've been pushing them. And I think they're going to have some alternatives that will, that will demonstrate kind of big solutions to this issue.
Thank you. And my last question is your new position with the, it's a, I can't remember the name of it.
It's a long one.
It deals with the same issue, sea level rise. And so somehow you will still be a part of the discussion with the Resiliency Project and then the San Francisco Guido Creek Project still.
Yes, so absolutely. And that was important to me as I thought about kind of this new position. So the new agency, it is a long name. It's the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. It was created by state legislation that was signed by Governor Newsom last fall. And it's basically taking over where the county left off on flood zones. So it does, sea level rise is absolutely core to its mission. And I've been talking with the JPA Board members and with some of the city staff about kind of how the new district may intersect with the JPA in terms of the Safer Bay Project going forward. I think that that would be good for the JPA. I think it would be good for the cities. And I think it would be good for the new district to kind of broaden that partnership to include this new agency, which is countywide. And then this new agency is one of the five members of the JPA, just as Menlo Park is one of the five members. And so essentially, I'll be going from wearing the hat of running the JPA to be the, on the staff side, running the, one of its member agencies. And certainly have said to everyone that I'm available to continue to be of service to the JPA and will be involved in the conversations through that mechanism, which I look forward to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you being here this evening via teleconferencing and the information that you've provided to the council in your service. Thank you. Are there any other follow-up questions from council? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much and good luck.
Okay, thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, it's regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. So the first item is G1, Consider Options to Amend the Tenant Assistance Program Administered by Samaritan House. To introduce this item is our Deputy Community Development Director of Housing, Rhonda Kaufman.
Hello, can you hear me okay? Can't hear you just yet. So let me pull up, Judy, will you be pulling up the presentation? Or should I pull that up on my screen?
Rhonda, I just made you a presenter, so you can go ahead and present your presentation.
Okay, I need to navigate to that.
And Ms. Kaufman, we can hear you. We're just all muted.
Okay, thank you. Judy, are you? I'm trying to open the PowerPoint. There we go. Sorry for this delay. Okay. So good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the council. My apologies for that delay there. I wanted to talk to you about the tenant assistance program tonight. Just a little bit of background to refresh on this item. This was originally initiated This was originally initiated as the Tenant Relocation Assistance Program in May of 2019. The City Council approved $112,000 of one-time funding and approved Samaritan House to be the administrator of the program. All right. Having some technical problems on my end. So in, just back in March, the city progress report was provided by, by myself and by the Samaritan House staff on the Tenant Relocation Assistance Program. And if you recall, there were, there were no requests for a relocation assistance. And at that time, City Council directed staff to transition a program to be, to repurpose it to be an emergency rental assistance program, which was related to COVID-19 and other programs. I'm sorry, other circumstances. And then we came back to council at the end of March with revised program guidelines and resolution. And at that time, we were asked to come back with some additional information on some options that were discussed that evening that were related to the, to expanding the use of the funds and removal of the eligibility requirements. So today, as that program is approved, as it was amended March 26th, it's called the Tenant Assistance Program. And a little briefly, just to cover some of the use of funds and eligibility, the use of funds are for two primary purposes. Rental assistance really related to COVID-19 or, or other emergency circumstances and tenant relocation assistance, which again, we haven't had, there haven't been any applications for that. The eligibility criteria is very streamlined. You, the, a tenant has to lease a unit within incorporated Menlo Park. They have to have leased the unit for a minimum of 12 months. For assistance for households that, that are asking for emergency rental assistance for non-COVID-related circumstances, in those cases, they need to be able to demonstrate that they can maintain their income. So those would be the one time kind of where somebody has a loss of income related to maybe a sick child and they weren't able to work and they just need the one-time assistance and they're able to sustain their housing on their own and pay their rent. Also, one thing that's very different about this program, the income can go up to 150% of the area median income. Most programs, rental assistance programs of this type limit, though some limit them to 60% of the area median income and some go as high as 80%. So in this case, households are allowed to make higher income. And then the amount of assistance available is up to $5,000 per household. So some of the options that we were asked to provide a little bit more information on were to expand the eligibility or the eligible use of funds to include mortgage payments, utility payments, food and other necessities, to also to remove all household eligibility criteria, including any income requirements and removing the maximum amount of assistance to one household. So just to talk a little bit about eligibility criteria, our eligibility criteria is based on similar rental assistance programs, best practices in these kinds of programs. And it's really to assist the most vulnerable households with the greatest need with rental assistance. The criteria establishes a process to ensure households with the greatest need, or I'm sorry, households that have access to other financial resources such as savings, use those first before they try to access these limited program funds. The criteria also provides a safeguard to ensure that city funds are distributed as intended. And one of the changes that was made to the program back in March was, which is, this is a significant one, was the program used to look at, consider household annual income, so the income for the whole year. And that's how they qualified, meeting that under 150% of the AMI. That was changed to looking at a household's income for the last 30 days. So this is going to allow many more households to be assisted, in particular those that have had a loss of income related to COVID-19. So mortgage payments and, and mortgage relief programs, there's been many actions that have been taken to suspend foreclosures, offer mortgage forbearance and waiving fees. Some of these include Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, they suspended foreclosures and evictions. They're offering mortgage forbearance of up to 12 months. The, in March, March 18th, had issued a 60-day moratorium on foreclosures and evictions for insured mortgages under the FHA program. And then private lenders, including Wells Fargo, US Bank and many others, have agreed to 90-day waivers of mortgage payments. Bank of, Bank of America is also deferring mortgage payments on a monthly basis until the crisis ends. And over 200 other financial institutions are taking similar actions to help households impacted by COVID-19. Utility payments, so there's a number of, of programs and actions that have been taken to help households. PG&E suspended disconnections for non-payment and to assist residential and small business customers. They're also offering flexible payment plans. Peninsula Clean Energy is providing one-time $100 credit to customers enrolled in the CARE program or the FARA programs. There's also the Home Energy Assistance Program and the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program that help, help households with their utility payments. And then finally, the Menlo Park Municipal Water suspended penalties for all service disconnections. And Cal Water has suspended disconnections for non-payment for residential services. Both of those providers are providing, allowing for other payment arrangement programs. Next item is food. There are several food programs that are available, not only to low-income households. These have, these have been traditionally just limited to lower-income households, but these are now being expanded to many of the households that have been impacted by COVID-19. These include meal delivery programs and food pantries such as Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, who provides most of the food to the food pantries. The various food pantries are operated by many local nonprofit organizations, including the Menlo Park Senior Center, Brown Bag Food Pantry and the Onetta Harris Community Center, Second Harvest Food Pantry. Hot meal programs have converted to offering delivery of meals rather than holding congregate dining services. And then the Menlo Park Community Services is operating its senior nutrition program via meal delivery in collaboration with Samaritan House. There are a few primary public-private partnerships that have been developed that likely council has, is familiar with, that are, are going to support the households most in need. San Mateo County Strong Fund, which is SMC Strong, is accepting funds that are going to be used to support individuals and families with household expenses such as rent and shelter, there to assist small local businesses and to support nonprofits that provide services to the most vulnerable community members. This program was initially funded in March by the County of San Mateo with Measure K funds with seed money of $3 million. These funds that are contributed to SMC Strong, a portion of these funds will be directed to Samaritan House, who will then use these funds to administer assistance programs to households in need. And then the other program is the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, the COVID Rapid Response Fund, or Recovery Response Fund and the Regional Nonprofit Emergency Fund. Silicon, they are accepting donations to this program. And when you make a donation to this program, you can designate a county that you want the funds to go to. And San Mateo County can be designated. And then those would be used similarly and be administered by similar nonprofits like Samaritan House to assist households throughout San Mateo County. Finally, in summary, the, the recommendations to modify the program are currently being addressed by some of these other resources that I just reviewed with you. And then there's a limit on the amount of funding assistance to individual households that we think is appropriate to maximize the program. This allows, the, the initial seed money was $100,000 for direct payment assistance. $12,000 was for Samaritan House administrative costs. So with $100,000, if each household received the maximum assistance of 5,000, those funds could assist up to 20 households and more if households receive less assistance. As of April 1st, Samaritan House has received approximately 13 rental assistance applications. And they expect that they will use all of the initial program funding to provide assistance. They believe that there will be an increase in the request for rental assistance related to COVID-19 in May and June because of the current moratorium on evictions and, and the ability of tenants to request some, some payment workouts with their landlords. Samaritan House is designated as a San Mateo County Core Service, Core Service Provider. And they are the ones that administer most of the assistance programs that I, I talked about in some of those previous slides, including housing, shelter, food, utilities and many others. And contributions can be also made directly to Samaritan House and they can be earmarked to support Menlo Park community members. They can be made to the tenant assistance program or they can just be made to provide any of these other types of assistance that Samaritan House administers. So with that, I, I will conclude and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman, for the presentation. Are there any follow-up questions from the council? Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Hello, Mayor Taylor. I did not receive any public comment from the web form. So at this time, I ask any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, which is G1, Amendment to the Tenant Assistant Program administered by Samaritan House, to raise your hand. Or you can use the question mark feature. We'll give you a couple of seconds here in case you are using the type-in feature opposed to the hand-raising feature.
I will wait. Councilmember Carlton?
No, I'll wait until if there's any public to speak, that's fine.
And I'm seeing none. If for some reason we get one later on that was written in, I'll pop back on the screen and let you know, Mayor Taylor.
So I, I
Ms. Heron.
Sorry, may I? If we don't have any further questions, then I, I would move that we maintain the Tenant Assistant Program and guidelines as amended March 26th, with no additional changes.
Councilmember Carlton made a motion and it looks like that Councilmember Nash seconded the motion.
Okay, so I have a, first by Councilmember Carlton, a second by Councilmember Nash, by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, your vote?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G2, the adoption of, of uncodified urgency ordinance 1068 imposing temporary moratorium on eviction for non-payment. And to introduce this item is our interim city attorney, Ms. Kara Silver.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, John Passman, our, of our Community Development Department will be making the presentation.
Hello, Mayor. And Councilmembers, one second while I pull up the presentation. Does everyone see that?
Yes, we can see it.
All right, so good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm John Passman with the Housing and Economic Development Division. And I'll be giving a brief presentation and overview of the Small Business Eviction Moratorium Urgency Ordinance that's before you tonight. So let's start with a quick background on eviction moratoria that had been adopted regionally due to COVID-19. March 23rd was the San Mateo County, Countywide Moratorium for Residential Tenants. This didn't include small businesses, but it did include the City of Menlo Park for residential tenants. On March 24th, Santa Clara County adopted a similar moratorium on evictions, but theirs was a bit broader with residential and small business tenants included. Last week, April 7th, San Mateo County adopted a second moratorium. And this one did include small business tenants, but was only for unincorporated areas. What they defined as small businesses were those that had less than 2.5 million in gross receipts. And then moratorium is effective through May 31st, which is similar to the, the previous two as well, are affected through May 31st. That same night, on April 7th, City Council directed staff to prepare a moratorium for small business evictions that was similar to the San Mateo County moratorium that was only adopted for unincorporated areas. So that's what we're bringing forward tonight. This small business tenant eviction moratorium is modeled on the San Mateo County moratorium. The two triggers that would bring about protections for a small business tenant would be non-payment of rent due to circumstances related to COVID-19. And a no-fault eviction is also protected in this scenario unless the property owner can show significant health or safety reasons. So the circumstances are fairly broad when we're talking about circumstances related to COVID-19. It can be sickness, medical expenses, childcare. The, the small business tenant just has to demonstrate that and the financial hardship. Small businesses are being defined, defined similar to the county ordinance as those with gross receipts less than 2.5 million. And this ordinance will be effective through May 31st and less extended by the City Council. Additionally, this is an urgency ordinance, so it will be effective immediately if adopted and requires a fourth, fifth vote. So the, the City Council requested that there be one key difference from the countywide or the, the county ordinance for unincorporated areas. And that's the inclusion of hardship waiver or protection for property owners. Under this provision, if a property owner is excessively burdened by the non-payment of rent by a tenant, they can demonstrate this, send in a written demonstration of this and the city manager can grant relief in such scenarios. Tenants that will remain liable for unpaid rent, a rent. And that all unpaid rent needs to be paid within 90 days after the expiration of an ordinance, although that 90 days can be extended up to 180 days with proper demonstration of inability to continue paying rent. There will be no late fees on any unpaid rent under this ordinance. And crucially, all tenants that are able to pay the rent must continue to do so. So that's just a brief summary of the ordinance. Staff is recommending tonight that the City Council adopt this urgency ordinance and that we also continue to monitor the situation for extensions or future action. And that is my presentation. I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passman. Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. I have noticed that on, on some of the options in other areas, they can either do what we've outlined or they have the option of not taking rent for one, two, three months. and instead adding that to the end of the lease. So instead of not paying rent for a couple of months and then having to scramble as soon as things might get back on their feet to repay that money, I'm only concerned because I'm not convinced this is gonna just get better in August, and everybody's just gonna suddenly flock to the restaurants or the stores or what have you. And so by putting the payment of the rent off for a few months and then having that due within the next few months might be kind of onerous. Now, there might be landlords that need that money that soon, and that's fine, but is it possible for us to have an option where you can have Option A, what's outlined, or Option B, you don't have to pay for X many months, and that's added to the end of the lease? Because the landlord might be in a position to where that is more beneficial for the landlord, and it certainly will put less pressure in the mid to short term on the person paying the rent to be able to get back on their feet again, because I don't think this is gonna be one of those things where people get a break on the rent for a couple of months, and then everything's just gonna get better. So, or is it possible to add the Option B? Kara, I see your face appeared, so I assume you're gonna answer.
Thank you. So I have not seen that particular scenario incorporated into the recent ordinances that have been adopted. It may have been something that has been discussed, but I don't believe that there has been an ordinance that has actually adopted that provision. The reason why it may be of concern particularly to landlords is that the length of commercial leases, as you know, are longer than residential leases. So, you know, sometimes you'll have like a 30-year commercial lease, and putting the rent at the end of that lease, you know, would require the landlord to wait a long time.
I wasn't saying that we put that forced. I'm just saying that could be an option that could be negotiated by them for the landlords where that works, and I totally get that. Landlords won't, but it would be nice just to give them that option in case. I don't know if they have that option, but I was just bringing that forward. And I spoke to Fran D., who runs our Chamber of Commerce, for the people listening that don't know who Fran is. And Fran said she thought that would be a marvelous option, and I mean it as an option, not as something that's enforced for the very reason that you outlined.
Yes. So in that case, and with these types of ordinances, we strongly encourage the landlord and tenant to get together and meet and confer and try to resolve issues on their own. We would much prefer to have landlords and tenants agree to these terms rather than have to rely on sort of a one-size-fits-all ordinance. So I can suggest some language that would encourage that type of dialogue and allow for that type of option if both parties agree, if the council would like me to do that.
As I say, I'm only throwing it up as an option in the cases where that makes sense.
Exactly. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah. I apologize if this has been gone over, but I just want to explain it again. So my understanding right now is that the Judicial Council of California has taken action, basically instructing the courts for the next three months not to not to take action on any eviction, whether it be commercial or residential. And so, in effect, what we're doing is we're doing something that's actually quite limited. If that's saying that for the next month, the notice of an eviction would not be able to be served to start an action that otherwise is not going to ever to be perfected in the close of it. And so what we're, in essence, what we're doing in this, and Kara, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're doing in this is we're just taking, it's actually a very limited effect by doing this ordinance to allow businesses during this time period to be able to seek SBA loans or other financing without having an eviction notice having started against them. But in essence, the actual effect is such that those, whoever would have taken that action wouldn't have been able to close on it anyway for the next three months. So a landlord in this circumstance can't really turn around and say to the city, "You stopped me from evicting someone," because they wouldn't have been able to do it anyway. All we're doing is stopping the procedural start of that process and only doing it for a limited amount of time. Do I have that correct? Ms. Silver?
Yes, that is correct. And unlike the residential eviction moratoriums that have been passed, the commercial tenant is much more likely to be able to, as you say, apply for an SBA loan or apply for other programs where there is some protection or where there will be some additional revenue coming in that would allow them to eventually pay the rent. And it's, you know, hope that that rent will then be, or that the money from the CARES Act payment would then be paid over to the landlord as soon as it's received.
Yes, I just wanted to make that point for my colleagues and also for everyone else watching it, because sometimes when you take an action like this, people are concerned about the infringement of the property right. But in this circumstance, there is no court that will be enforcing the mechanism of that property right, actually for a longer period of time than this urgent or urgency ordinance is actually contemplated for. All we're doing is doing something for a limited amount of time in this initial ordinance to make it so that these businesses who are already enjoying the action of the Judicial Council such that there won't be, there will be no prejudice to them as they try to seek financing. And that's, I think that's actually from a public policy perspective complimentary to the actions that are already being taking place in the passing of the federal legislation of the CARES Act and other things that are taking place, both at the federal, state, and county level. So I share that thought with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Nash?
I guess, I would prefer to leave the order as it is rather than add some language about encouraging putting the monthly, the rent at the end of that lease, just because I'd like to encourage whatever we can do to allow the payment to be mutually agreeable between the tenant and the landlord, but I don't know that I want to go further than what the county has and actually do anything that puts it in writing as part of the ordinance. And then the other, if it's not a privacy concern, I would like to have the city manager report if there's any hardship waivers, just so we know how that, whether that's an option that's being used and can make any further decisions based on how often that's being used. Thank you.
Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Hello, Mayor Taylor. We did receive one public comment via the web form, so at this time I would ask anyone who is attending this meeting as a member of the public who would like to comment on this item, which is G2, Adoption of Uncodified Urgency Ordinance Number 1068 imposing temporary moratorium on eviction for small businesses. The comment I received was from Adina Levin, and I do see that Adina Levin is present at this meeting. So at this time, if you do have a public comment, please use the hand feature, and we'll be able to call anyone, open your mic. At this time, I'm going to unmute Adina Levin, ask if she would like me to read her comment or if she would like to provide a live public comment. And so, Adina, at this time, I've unmuted you. It does look like you have yourself muted. If you'd like to unmute, you can have the floor for three minutes, or you can direct me to read your public comment. Adina, are you able to unmute yourself?
Does that work?
Perfect.
All right, excellent. Well, happy to be using the dial-in public comment. And as an aside, this is a useful feature that I hope that as a state we can figure out how to continue after the governor's executive order has expired, that this convenience is enabled in the future as well. So, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, speaking for Menlo Together. And this is something that, as I wrote in the letter to council, Menlo Together does support this. In terms of small businesses are important parts of our community and are really being hit hard by COVID-19. And this moratorium, I understand from what Council, that what Councilmember Mueller has said, which is that an eviction that started would not be able to be completed. However, something that protects a small business from the eviction process starting, that they're able to, you know, get loans and maintain the financing, anything that is able to protect the businesses so that they will be able to return and serve the community when this emergency is over, is important for the people at the businesses that would be enduring the hardship and for our community that benefits for these businesses. So I hope that you do move forward with this. One thing in the letter is that, one of the things that City of San Mateo did when it approved a similar ordinance was to call out explicitly that this applies to nonprofits. That does seem like a logical thing to add on, so I would hope that you would do that as well. And then there is a nuance in the staff report that, you know, maybe everybody else in the community understands, but I would welcome a clarification, which is, what does it mean for the hardship waiver? Does that mean that the landlord that has the hardship waiver is able to initiate the eviction proceedings or that there is some other solution that the city can bring to bear? So if it would help to clarify to the community, that would be helpful to understand. Thank you for taking this up quickly, and I hope that you do approve it to protect the small businesses in our community, and thank you for your service at this very difficult time. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Levin, for your public comment. And I wanted to follow up with Ms. Silver or our city manager regarding the hardship waiver?
Yes. So, did you want me to respond to Ms. Levin's comment?
Yes, please.
Sure. So, the hardship waiver is written broadly so that the city manager can determine whether a full or partial rent payment is should be granted or not. And also, if, you know, if the rental payment is not granted, or if the hardship waiver is not granted, then the landlord would be able to proceed with the eviction by issuing a notice. But as Councilmember Mueller mentioned earlier, it's unlikely that the eviction would actually go through because of the Judicial Council rule that has effectively suspended all judicial actions relating to unlawful detainers. But in writing the hardship waiver, our thought was that it would be very broad. And, you know, I think that the first approach would be to, if there is a hardship presented, would be to determine how much of a reduction could be tolerated by the landlord, given the economic situation.
Okay, thank you. And that would completely be up to the city manager to determine?
Yes, based on hardship waivers. Yes.
Okay. My next question is about including nonprofits. And if you include nonprofits, will that include churches as well?
That's an interesting question. Most churches own their property, but to the extent that, you know, they are, they're leasing properties. Are you aware of any churches in Menlo Park who lease property?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a policy call. You can certainly extend it to nonprofits, and, you know, you wouldn't want to limit it just to churches, but nonprofits and other religious institutions, perhaps?
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton? We can't hear you.
Excuse me, I apologize. Is it appropriate or done that a government would use taxpayer dollars to support? Not that I have any problem with any religious group, but is it done that a government would use taxpayer dollars to support a particular religious group? I, as I say, without prejudice, I'm just wondering.
So I think you're asking whether including religious organizations in this would violate the Establishment Clause, which is something that is not permitted. But I don't think that an ordinance like this would amount to violating that particular prohibition. It is common when you have exemptions for nonprofits and those types of organizations that you typically look at the broad spectrum of them, and it's common to also, you know, carve out religious institutions. In many institutions, churches are considered nonprofits, and so sometimes you don't have to specifically call them out. But given that we can't really research that particular issue right now, I would, if you think it's an important issue, I would just recommend that religious institutions be called out.
All right. Well, following up on that, it says in the report that the city manager or its designee shall have the authority to review that request and grant relief if deemed necessary. What forms of relief are available, and what is the criteria in determining that?
Right. So the relief is a reduction in the rental amount, or it could be a complete waiver of the ordinance, which would then allow the landlord to proceed with serving the notice. But the actual eviction could not occur, given the Judicial Council suspension of the unlawful detainer lawsuits during the
The same point that Ray was making. If they can't be evicted anyway, why are we getting involved?
Yes. So, and that's, I think it's really a two-part protection. If there are certain instances where a tenant might be served a notice, and it comes up mainly in the residential context, but it could also arise in the commercial context, where the tenant is served a notice, doesn't know about this suspension of the unlawful detainer courts. doesn't know about this suspension of the unlawful detainer courts, and decides to just voluntarily move out because they can't pay the rent. And so then the community...
How would you magically know about what Menlo Park passes?
That's true, although with this ordinance, there is a requirement to give the landlord, or to give the tenant notice that this ordinance is in effect. So they do have that protection.
All right. My last question on this is, I worry about kicking the can. And what we're doing is, we're taking this financial liability and we're just shoving it further up the food chain. I realize that the, basically, we're enabling the city manager to become an arbitration board on what rents get paid, which is a lot of pressure for a busy city manager. What other reliefs are available? I mean, are we going to have a sheet available for the landlords? Because some of them may have trouble themselves paying their mortgage and may be at risk of losing their building. Some of them, this is their livelihood, and maybe they're not going to be able to make their house payment because they're not getting the rent. You know, there are liabilities in terms of responsibilities for the people that own the buildings as well. So what remedies are there to make sure that we're not putting undue financial burden? A lot of them can handle it, but for those that can't, what are we doing to protect those people?
So we have the hardship provision, and the intent of the hardship provision is to have a, you know, an impartial arbitrator, look at the financial statements of the landlord, look at the financial statements of the tenant, and try to make a determination. This ordinance is a very short ordinance. It runs through May 31st, so, you know, a month and a half. And in all likelihood, you know, if rents are due the first of the month, which, you know, in many cases they are, we're only dealing with one month of rent. And so it's, you know, we think that that's a reasonable task for, you know, the city manager or the finance director to be able to evaluate. And we, you know, I think there are appropriate safeguards in the ordinance that would allow for some financial analysis to be done.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so, Kat, I'm not as worried about the, I'm not as worried about whether or not we're causing harm and pushing it upstream, because the Judicial Court already sort of decided that, Judicial Council already decided that when it paused unlawful detainer actions for the next three months. The question in my mind, when I'm looking at this ordinance right now, and Kara, I'm gonna, I need to rely on you with this, but I don't know how far the courts have pushed the interpretation of the First Amendment to property rights. Because what I'm concerned about is, my memory of First Amendment law is that when you vest decision-making authority in a public official, you need to have clear criteria for the exercise of that authority. And so that belies Councilmember Carlton's concern expressed around what criteria is the city manager going to use? Not that we don't trust the city manager to use good judgment in that, but that is the criteria established such that a person would know it and understand it and be able to rely on it? Or is it, or is it, or could it be unclear to a person whether or not they actually have protection of it? Or could it be, or could it be applied differently to different people, even on accident? So I'm a little concerned about that, about whether or not we need a little bit more clearer criteria there as to what's a hardship. To speaking of my colleagues' proposals about making it clear it applies to nonprofits and apply to churches, I have no problem with that at all. Like, that's, that's fine. I agree with Council, with Councilmember Nash, that we would, I would prefer to apply, I would prefer to stick with the county's model ordinance. So, but, but the only thing that, that's still an unanswered question in my mind is, should there be some more definitive measure or criteria for the official who's exercising discretion?
Yes, thank you. And that's a fair point. I think that it would be helpful to have some criteria there. It's not necessarily a First Amendment issue, because we're not issuing like a, you know, a parade permit or something like that where that issue has come up. But just for clarity, in terms of decision-making authority, I think it would be helpful to have some criteria around what would constitute a hardship, and, you know, perhaps what type of documentation would be requested. I'm not sure if that's something that we could prepare this evening. One option is to, is to bring that language back to you. Or another option is to delegate that to the city manager to adopt guidelines for implementing that provision. And then the, we sort of envisioned that it would probably be somebody within the Finance Department that would make this decision. And so this, it would be appropriate for the city manager to adopt guidelines on how to determine a financial hardship, and then have the Finance Director implement those guidelines and apply those guidelines when making the decision.
Yeah, so for me personally, so thank you on the clar, so the First Amendment's been applied to a lot of things, quite, to be honest, that I think are a little goofy. So I didn't know if they've pushed it that far. But then secondarily, I'm fine, given, because right now this urgency ordinance has a limited duration to begin with. And candidly, even if you had a hardship, you're not going to be able to actually evict anyone for the next three months. So I'm fine with initially sending it to the city manager to create those guidelines, those guidelines around.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Maybe this is in the staff report, and I missed it, but upon expiration is the idea that this would automatically come back before the council in some official way? Or would it just expire and there is no plan for staff to bring this back as it nears expiration to make some assessment of the situation at that time?
So currently, there is no language in the ordinance. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit of an echo. But what we would probably do is follow the county's lead on that. And if the county decides to extend their ordinance, of course, we would bring it back to you all as well. And, you know, if you can direct us to bring it back to you, regardless of what the county does, of course, before it expires.
Thanks for that. I'll just add, I'm supportive. And, you know, I do want to remind, the reason we're seeing this is because we asked staff to bring this to us. And so this wasn't something that they took upon themselves. We actually asked them to bring this to us. And so I think that some of the, I think, what were really legitimate questions that Councilmember Carlton posed would probably be best posed to the council. Because again, like I said, we were the ones who made the decision to give staff directive. Again, I'm supportive. I think the value is limited, but not insignificant in the sense that it just, you know, provides this relief from the possibility of receiving an eviction notice. I don't imagine, given the limited duration of the current ordinance, and the fact that, you know, there really isn't some relief that can be given that any landlord would actually, who has a hardship, would actually engage in the process of seeking some sort of hardship waiver in producing documents? Because at the end of the day, it's not like then you get to go collect rent if you get the hardship waiver from the city manager. So I do think, to Councilmember Carlton and Councilmember Mueller's point, it is important that we go our precise in our language, and especially to the extent to which we're putting something out there as a city ordinance. But it is, again, like I said, if I'm a landlord and I'm doing a sort of a cost-benefit analysis, then why would I engage in the cost of, you know, engaging the city? Again, like if I had some hardship, since the benefit to me is nil. Like, I don't think it, my rent, to what earlier points have been made, that the courts at the time aren't processing evictions. So again, I'm supportive of this. I think it sends a clear signal that we, more than anything, want small businesses and their landlords to engage in a dialogue and understand that we're only going to sort of get through this to the extent to which we all see ourselves as being connected. And so if I see this, more than anything, as us as a council sending that message that we really, really think we need to see, that we're all sort of in this together, and it's important that we sort of engage in dialogue. And my hope is that this encourages, you know, along with other, other sort of legislations or provisions in this area, encourages landlords to dialogue with their tenants.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
Have any other cities or counties put in a hardship waiver that we know of?
Yes, City of San Mateo has a hardship waiver. And that's the only one I know of. There aren't a lot of cities that have adopted these, the commercial eviction ordinance, as of right now.
Is the hardship waiver that the City of San Mateo has something that we could adopt? What I'm concerned about is, especially since, as is been stated, it's a very short duration, that there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of benefit for a landlord to go through the hardship waiver, given that the courts will not look at the evictions right now. And so I don't want to burden our city manager with a lot of work to come up with guidelines for hardship, if it's not something that will be, it's just a cost benefit. Is it worth having our city manager do that? Is there some template that she can, you know, that we can adopt easily?
Right. So this hardship waiver was actually modeled after San Mateo's hardship waiver. But I've seen other hardship waivers that have a little bit more kind of meat on the bones. And I think that I can work with the city manager to come up with something. I just didn't want to do it on the dais this evening. I don't think it would be very difficult. No.
And then is it possible to have a report?
The city manager chime in on that. I'm happy to help with that language.
And then the other question is, is it possible to get a report if we do get hardship waivers? And just so that we know as this is happening?
Of course. Of course, we're glad to give you reports. And I'm sure that we can come up with an outline, administrative guidelines, on what criteria to consider. It should be pretty quick.
And there's no privacy concerns about getting the report?
Well, I mean...
We would release the information, right?
Right. We could tell you the number, not, I don't, you're not asking for us to identify the name of the landlord and the tenant, are you? Thank you. I appreciate the discussion, and especially what you said, Vice Mayor Combs, just around the connectedness. I know that this is not a perfect solution. It's a very temporary solution, but it's definitely taking some leadership with our council and how we respect and need our business community. And looking at the effects of our pandemic and how it's affecting all of us financially, it's important to do something. And so I appreciate that we have it in front of us and we have the opportunity to do just a little bit, even if it isn't a whole lot. I'm glad we're doing something. So at this time, Ms. Silver, you heard the direction from council and what they wanted to see. Councilmember Nash, I appreciate you bringing up the guidelines with the city manager and not adding more to what she already has on her plate. So I appreciate that. And just looking at how we can share the responsibility amongst us and do things in a way that it will at least move us a little bit forward. So I appreciate that piece. And I believe I've already asked Ms. Heron if she had any public comment. We did that. Vice Mayor Combs, I saw your hand.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Because, right, because the city attorney has said that, like, they can add the specific guidelines later. And so, and so I would just move that we approve the, approve adoption of the ordinance imposing temporary moratorium on eviction or non-payment of rent by small businesses, commercial tenants directly impacted by COVID-19, with the addition of nonprofits and religious institutions, organizations.
Or we could just use the language 501(c)(3)'s? Kara, that was a question I forgot to ask you about.
That's fine. That's a policy call. Would you prefer, I just don't know if all religious organizations are organized as 501(c)(3)'s. That's my only reservation.
So what made me think about it is that, after talking to a few pastors, out of the nine, I think three rent space from a church. And so they are a 501(c)(3). And so they were concerned about their circumstances being able to pay their rent. And so that's why I brought it up, if it's a possibility.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Well, just one moment. Councilmember Mueller. Was, Kat, I saw your hand up, and so I didn't want to...
I was just going to ask, just for clarification. We all talked about how we'd like the, send the landlord to get together and make the necessary negotiations. What we have in front of us is a little bit prescriptive. Do they have the ability to come to an agreement that isn't necessarily written out in this? Or do they have to follow what we have outlined if they want to negotiate how the rents pay?
I mean, I, I'll just sort of chime in for my interpretation and others, maybe with more information.
Kara, I wanted a legal...
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, totally fair. But I think at the end of the day, landlords and tenants can come to whatever decision they want to, or agreement they want to. I mean, it's not, it, there's nothing preventing them from doing that. And there is, I'm sure that that's happening all over the country at this moment, of which government is playing absolutely no role at the residential level and in the, you know, commercial space level. But yeah, I'll let Kara provide a real... But yeah, I'll I'll let Cara provide a real
But sometimes I'm surprised, which is why I just wanted confirmation.
Yes, there's nothing in this ordinance that prevents landlords and tenants from agreeing to um anything um that they would like to.
Yes. Okay, great.
So in in terms of of the the amendments that I have, um or the motion that I have, um I'll I'll restate it once, I guess, once um Councilmember Mueller makes his friendly amendment.
Right, talk first, yeah.
Okay.
So I would, yes, I'd say small businesses. And then I would say 501 organizations, not limited to 501(c)(3), but every, anything that would fall under the 501 section, the IRS code. Because there are other types of nonprofits and organizations that would fall under that, under that section.
I mean, I'm I'm totally fine with it with that that amendment. And also just pointing out uh for clarity, like, we're, with regards to small businesses, like, we're we're limiting the annual revenue. We're defining them as as annual revenue of no more than 2.5 million, right? But with regards to these others, the 501s, there is no limit, just just for for clarity, right? We're we're not putting the same sort of
Oh, that's a, oh, that's a That's a, that's an interesting distinction. I'm not sure of that, because there are 501 organizations as you get further up the 501 food chain that that's quite a bit of revenue.
Yeah, no, I I don't, so, so then should we add that limitation? It wouldn't be like sort of a revenue limitation, but I I don't know uh how you would sort of see it in a, in a, in a nonprofit, but but a uh eh how how you would describe it. But but so I'm totally fine if we want to have that that limitation, but but we should certainly have that debate.
Isn't this for small, for small businesses anyway, which is defined by the county, is uh under 2.5 million?
Yeah, so how how did other jurisdictions apply it to nonprofits and to and do uh? How did they do with that in San Mateo? They said that they had a much, they had a much bigger amount than 2.5 million. They had like 25 million or something like that.
Yes, it was 25 million. I can look up San Mateo's ordinance. Um but, you know, yeah, that this is, this can be kind of complicated in drafting it. Uh, you know, I was thinking, uh, for instance, Stanford University is is a 501 organization.
Yeah, exactly. I would just prefer to say, instead of 501(c), I mean, I don't know. I I I'm, I'm confused now. We're in a rabbit hole. I don't know what to do.
In the staff report, there was a, there was a cap on 2.5 million. We were following the lead of the the um uh county. So whether this is a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4) or a profit-making organization, it's capped at 2.5 million by definition of being a small organization, no?
Yeah, I'm fine with the 2.5 million limit myself.
I'm I'm fine too, but I think, to your point, I I think that we have to make that clear in this this ordinance. Um I I I don't think it's 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 necessarily a default, but I'm I'm totally fine with it. And which is why, you know, I brought it up.
Right. So what we would do is we would say um in defining small business, it's a business entity or a 501 organization with gross receipts of less than 2.5 million per year. And then in terms of the other amendments, what I heard was um to direct the city manager to adopt guidelines to demonstrate how the hardship waiver will be applied and what documents to present. And also, um I did hear um discussion of um asking the city manager to report on whether any hardship waivers have been granted.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I I wasn't actually saying I I wanted her to have specific written down criteria, because you could paint yourself in a corner with that. I appreciate that when you and she put this together, you left it a little bit open because there are different scenarios and you're intelligent professionals. Um so I don't want you to misinterpret that. Um it is good to have a a general guideline, uh but I want to make sure it's not too prescriptive because there are different scenarios that might come up where, you know, we're dealing with a compassion situation, I guess.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm, I I honestly, I have completely contrary of you guys. I think you need to have defined criteria when you're applying a benefit like this to the public.
I I can go either way. I was just, I was just being respectful to why they'd left it open.
Ms. Silver, did you, Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I I said, I I also, and I I guess I would, I would defer to being a a little more clear and and detailed in the, or prescriptive in in the guidelines. Um but um and I'll also add that I still think we're we're looking for a second on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll second it. I apologize. I thought, I thought we had one. I'll I'll second it for you.
Hello. I'm going to ask interim uh Cara Silver if you can just repeat the motion, including the amendments for the record. I can take the roll call vote following.
Sure. So the motion is to adopt the urgency ordinance with an amendment to section 3e3 to include um 501 organizations. And those 501 organizations have to have a um gross revenue um of less than 2.5 million to direct the city manager to adopt guidelines regarding how to demonstrate hardship waiver and what documents to present. And third, to request the city manager to report on whether any hardship waivers have been granted.
Thank you, interim city attorney. So at this time, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by Carlton. Uh, Councilmember Carlton, your vote?
There's a question, Judy?
Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Nash?
Question is, um, do we need to, um, I think that I've heard both using receipts, gross receipts and gross revenues. I wanted to see what we're using. I believe that nonprofits still have revenues. They just don't make a profit. So I'm not sure that we need that much of a distinction. Perhaps we can just stay with revenues. Um but I'd heard it two different ways, so I just wanted to make sure before we voted. Thank you.
I apologize for that. Um you're you're correct. I did say it both ways. The the lit, ordinance language is gross receipts. So that's the language that we would use.
Thank you, interim city attorney, Cara. Uh so at this time, I will be taking a roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Mueller?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Combs? Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And now we will go to our next item on regular business. And that is G3, Update the City Council and Public on COVID-19 Health Emergency and the City's Response. To introduce this item is our interim city attorney, Ms. Cara Silver.
I think this is being um introduced by the city manager's office.
Hi, I I think that we'll have Justin Murphy kick it off and then turn it over to Clay Curtin, who's been leading our communications team. And Justin has been leading our EOC team. And it's sort of, and I think, I hope you all realize that we added a, an attachment to this item um last night, which is a um version of our incident action plan, which really describes in detail the kind of work that the EOC has been doing. So I'll turn it over to Justin.
I am just looking to connect Justin. Give me one moment, please. So Justin, it does look like your microphone um is off mute and you should be able to
Great.
Thank you.
So, let's see. But in terms of our, Judy, are you allowing me to present?
Hey, Justin. So what's planning on presenting, but is your presentation in?
No, it's just that I'm, I'm just going to the um, to the, to the attachments to the uh agenda.
So just the IAP?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I can open that and display it. Give me just a couple of seconds here, everyone. I apologize.
Okay, sorry. It's like, you can't, sorry, Judy. I I thought you could share my screen.
I just, it's how um we've lost the ability to promote. So I can't promote you from where you are, but it'll just take me one quick second.
Okay. I guess the other question. Yeah. Okay, great.
Did that promotion work, Sean?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Okay, Justin, you should be able to take control from here. Thank you all for your patience.
Great. So, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Taylor and city council. As the city manager said, I'm going to provide a brief uh update. So I'm going to just start with a clarification of this uh agenda topic. There is no staff report. Staff's not requesting um any action. There's no recommendation, recommendation to council. It's just an opportunity to provide an update. So I'm gonna um just pull up the two, the the documents that were attached to the um agenda. So the first are the emergency orders. So there's a number of recitals at the beginning and then we're into the um, you know, the the actions associated with the order. And so the first one is related to the um restrictions on construction. So that's in the first, first order. And then uh second order with similar recitals. And then this, how, one had to do with the specific closure of facilities. And this is where we got specific about tennis courts and basketball courts. We got the point of where we took down basketball rims. It's part of the effort to uh enforce the social distancing requirements. So then, as the city manager said, and she's got the dual title of Emergency Services Director, uh we attached the incident action plan. So this plan is in compliance with the um uh National Incident Management System uh as outlined by FEMA. And um each jurisdiction can kind of come up with their own template. So we established a a template. And it, um, this one's a snapshot from the, from April 10th. And we review this document on a daily basis. Our operational period is, um, even this particular incident is um uh pretty much nine to five on on weekdays. Um and so the uh seven objectives are listed here. These are the same seven objectives that we uh shared with you last week. So there's no fundamental changes since a a week ago. And then what the city manager was um talking about in terms of the action items, this just um gives you a snapshot of kind of, oh, some of the things that we're working on. And this, this tool with our uh daily briefings at the beginning and at the end of the day, we use this tool to provide a kind of a constant rhythm and structure to how we manage the incident. So um this, we identified some of the various roles, uh what people's um titles are both in the EOC and kind of their um their day-to-day responsibilities. So um this just gives you a feel for uh what various people are working on, what the, what the city is doing. So one uh key thing that will, that this structure allows us to do is to coordinate on our communication. So we will be hearing shortly from uh Clay Curtin, our uh public engagement manager, who's also serving as the chief uh public information officer this week. That's kind of a very high intensity role um through this EOC process. And so that alternates uh every other week. And so our other uh chief public information officer is Nicole Acker. Uh she, uh her day job is in the police department and she's been doing a a commendable job along with uh Clay. So um just to wrap up the rest of the uh IAP, this just uh confirms where we are with the status of city services. Again, I showed a snapshot of this last week about all the various briefings across um the public information officer, the city attorney, city manager, things that are happening throughout the, throughout the county. A lot of briefings that uh go on on a very routine basis. This just reiterates um some of the safety messages of of the shelter-in-place order that's uh in effect through uh May 3rd as of now. Again, the assignments, you'll just kind of see a pattern that some people are staying on board in terms of their fifth week uh in their role in the EOC. And then we've got some that are uh cycling through. And then just uh the, kind of the daily updates that occur to the uh this incident action plan. So uh that's a quick uh summary. And there's a number of people um uh involved uh on this panel call right now that can field questions. But at this point in time, we want to turn it over to Clay Curtin to give a overview summary of our communication efforts. I know that that was a question that the council asked about last uh Tuesday. So uh Clay will give you a quick synopsis of uh what's, what's been going on. Okay, so with that, I'll uh turn it back over to Judy, uh who will then kind of set things up for Clay. Again, we're all available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. It does look like we have Clay all queued up. So Clay, when you're ready?
All right. Thank you, Judy, and thank you, Justin. Uh, good evening, city council and members of the public. Um, I'm happy to provide some details about our outreach during the pandemic. Uh, we have used both digital and non-digital communications during this crisis. We have provided nearly 20 citywide email messages to over 44,000 subscribers of our email distribution lists. Um, nearly 200 social media posts to over 25,000 social media followers and have seen uh over 78,000 website visits from uh over 19,000, almost 20,000 unique viewers to our website. Offline, we've posted about 250 of the two-foot by three-foot signs throughout the city. These alert people to our facility closures um that were called out during the, one of the orders and and some other places there in the IAP. And also highlight that social distancing is a necessity at this time. Uh, we also completed a reverse 911 call to just over 50,000 landlines in Menlo Park. That includes uh business and residential lines. We are also in the process of sending out an eight-page mailer with resources in both English and Spanish that is currently at the print shop and will be distributed to over two, I'm sorry, 20,100 addresses in Low Park. Those are both uh business and residential addresses. And we've uh continued to take other steps. We're, you know, continuing to provide updates via our website. We've published uh approximately 30 blog postings and send uh weekly recaps to the public through our email distribution system. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin, for the presentation and all the work that you're doing to get all of the information that I know changes practically every day out to the public. Are there any follow-up questions from the council? Councilmember Carlton?
Hi, first of all, I want to thank you guys so much. I know many of you are doing jobs that are not your normal jobs. And we really appreciate you stepping up and working to try and make everyone in the, the city and as it impacts the, the whole state safer. I had a question, it said in there that all parks were monitored on holiday weekends. Are the parks not monitored pretty much all the time? Maybe not actively, but as the police drive by, I, I, can you talk to us a little bit more about how the parks are monitored? Because I'm, I get emails, I'm sure other council members do, of people upset that they're groups of kids hanging out together, that they're groups of people. And I was just wondering, how are we looking into that? And what are we doing about that on a proactive? I mean, I, I think it's great that we have the ability to go on the, the city website and report things so that maybe when people are not aware, they can be informed by letter. But how are we more proactively looking into, to the activities in the park?
Great, so I can, uh, this is Justin and I can kind of start off and then happy for others to chime in, especially our Police Chief Bertini. But, so this, this past weekend, we actually piloted a program of having kind of park ambassadors, monitors at the two parks. And so we focused in on Nealon Park and Kelly Park in terms of an opportunity of actually having non-police staff members out kind of with the opportunity to help encourage compliance with the social distancing requirements. And it becomes a balancing act of, we're not looking to kind of put people in, in harm's way, but we also are trying to just make sure that people are complying. So that was the first weekend where we proactively put staff out and we kind of evaluate how that happened to see if it's worth expanding that program. And then I can look to the Police Chief in terms of how they're able to kind of respond when we do get the, the complaints that you talked about.
Well, hold on, you, you, you mentioned that you had staff out there. How did it go? What, what were the? What happened? Did they, did they find people?
So, City Councilman Dave Bertini, Police Chief, I'm not sure if you can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, there, this was just a pilot program to have community services employees out at, at a couple of parks to see how that went. And they did contact folks and just kind of reminded people to, to socially distance. And if, if there was an issue that they needed the police for, they had our direct number and they could have called us. But in answer to your other question about whether parks are monitored, of course, parks are in fact monitored all the time. You are correct, as the police drive by. But obviously, we have a limited, a number of resources and, and officers are going not only to calls for service, but they're also checking in on essential businesses. But they are checking on schools and parks on a constant basis. But we do, we do rely on residents or, or people who are, who see something going on to also report to us. And, and by the way, when someone does report on the, the portal, not just the letter is generated, we actually send a police officer out to deal with it. And then if it is a gardener, we do send a letter to the homeowner to remind them that please cancel your gardener service for the duration of this stay-at-home order.
So it was kind of my, that was my next question is, there seems to be confusion on, on Nextdoor anyway, about gardeners. And I was glad to suggest that the city, maybe on their website, put something very clear. We're, sometimes I think we, we lose clarity in, in trying to be polite, where we flat-out say, do not let your kids get together with other kids and hang out in the park. Do not let your gardener come. If you choose to pay him, great, but, you know, just being very, very clear. Because there is confusion, even at this late date, there's still some confusion. Or at least people who, unless we're very clear, will prefer their own version of what the order means to them.
Correct, and there is, there is clarity on our website that, that refers to the actual order itself. And it, when we're talking about gardeners, it specifically says, unless it is a life safety or a safety issue, like a tree limb, a tree limb falling or something like that, gardeners for upkeep are not allowed.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to thank city staff. It's been incredibly challenging time. And you guys have done, done tremendous work. Clay, the metrics on, on the outreach, the, the internet outreach is, are wonderful. The only place that I'm still struggling from a council, from a council level is, and I know we've talked about in the past, but I'm just sort of highlighting from my colleagues that I'm at the point where I want to talk about it again, is the issues that we're having with our homeless population who are refusing services and, and how that is, in my opinion, deteriorating further as the crisis goes along and their interaction is taking place with the public as a result. And that's something that has been outside the city's hands, has been tied. I think it's important to indicate that to the public because we're getting questions about it and it's something that we have taken up and we've been quite vigilant and aggressive to try to figure out. But this is something that's handled by outside agencies. And our police department and city's hands are, are quite tight on this issue. But I think it's something that we're going to need to revisit again very soon in the interest of the public health. And those are my comments for the evening. And not only in the public's health, but in, in interest of our homeless population's health, who are refusing the services.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Are there any follow-up questions or comments from any other council members? Councilmember Nash?
So I would like to propose that we reactivate the EQC in order to have them specifically focus on our climate emergency. They are ready and eager to go and we just need to, they need to go ahead from, and I don't know if it's staff, council, whatever, but, and this would be specifically around the Climate Action Plan. And I would, I'm looking for support for that. And Starla and I have spoken about it, Rebecca Lucky and I have spoken about it, and they're both supportive.
I, I support that and I also support a number of our commissions and committees. I think that we've all proven, you know, it's funny, World War II, they say, did a great job of proving that women can actually function in the workforce. And I think that the takeaway from this is that while it's not ideal, it's, it is very functional to have meetings either through this platform or through Zoom or what have you. It works very well and there's no reason why we can't have a lot of the meetings with the commissioners who, quite frankly, now have more time on their hands and are quite happy to, to get involved and get work done. And so I, I think that's great, not only for the EQC, but strategically for a lot of the different commissions that we have.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Um, yeah, I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're having this still under G, under G3? This discussion, right? Okay, yeah. Uh, I, I would, I would just sort of obviously want to hear from staff. I, I think these web, sort of these teleconferences are, are a lot more challenging to put on than you would imagine, especially for public bodies where there are certain sort of responsibilities and obligations. And so you can't just sort of have a Zoom link that you share out. And, and so I, I would certainly want staff to chime in because I, I think, I know they obviously do it for council and do it for the planning commission, but I think there's a lot more man and woman hours that go into these than, than we might think. And again, to Councilmember Nash's suggestion, I'm not certainly opposed to the EQC, but if we're sort of, if we're not doing them all, then I specifically want to sort of, I would want to get some feedback from staff on like, you, you know, if we're gonna do all of the commissions or we're gonna phase them back in, like what they would see as, as, as their priority. But again, not, not opposed to, to, to the EQC being reinstated.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So yes, I agree. I actually think, um, I was proposing only the EQC because of the climate emergency. And I'm not opposed to having others get started, but I do think that staff definitely needs to, we need to consider those constraints. But this is specifically the EQC around climate action, not even beyond the climate action at this point.
So we can certainly look at what staff resources would, would be needed for that. Thank you, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Combs. It is actually very difficult to present these meetings and, and pull the agenda together. And, and I think, having said that, we, you know, if the council's direction is to re-initiate the EQC, we can definitely look at that. But I do need to let you know that we may need to assign different staff members than those who have traditionally been assigned to EQC and then other commissions as that follows on, just depending on the workforce and who's available to work and other obligations and responsibilities. And, and then I, I think we have to also consider the intent of reviving the commission. If the intent is that they're preparing a work plan for council consideration, I, I think we want to look at that very judiciously. And the, and the staffing and assignments that would be tied to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, did you have a follow-up question or comment?
I, I will wait and see what. Basically, this is specifically around the climate emergency, which is, given that we're currently in a pandemic, under emergency orders, the other is also a high-level emergency. I don't know if, um, uh, the, my subcommittee, um, council subcommittee co-member, Ray wants to pipe up, you know, to weigh in as well. We were hoping to have a meeting soon. And the issue is that this is within the subcommittee, I'm sorry, within the EQC, the Climate Action Plan, and trying to be very aware of any demands on staff. But obviously, staff does need to be involved to get the meeting set up and, and all of that. Although, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Ms. Heron, I did not ask you this, or I don't think I asked, if we had any public comment on this, on item G3?
I'm here, Taylor. We do. G3 was, Adina Levin was, had submitted a web form comment, but I do see she is still on the line, so I can unmute her. She can provide her public comment during that time. I'll ask any other members of the public to use the raise your hand feature and we can set you up for public comment as well. So this time, Adina, I've unmuted your mic. Are you able to engage yours?
Do I need to also unmute on my side? Okay, aha, I needed to hit the button twice, but it is now unmuted. Thank you very much. Adina Levin, and also commenting from Menlo Together on this item. And thank you so much to staff and to City Council, to the hard work in keeping the community safe and to communicate what's going on in this very complicated situation to residents and community members. And particularly appreciate the handy signs that are in public places and appreciate what the city is doing to the extent that there can be public facilities open as well as potentially street safety improvements made to facilitate people getting exercise while keeping social distancing. The comment that I had sent in was about wanting to see some of the communication, the email and, and website and other electronic communication is really fantastic, but not 100% of our community is online. And so it, it did sound like, from listening to the staff report, that there is a printed document that is going out to all the households in Menlo Park and it is going out in English and Spanish. So I believe that does address the question and concern that I raised in the comments, that we also need to be doing paper communication and that paper communication should be in English and Spanish. And would encourage the city, you know, as things continue to develop and evolve, to continue to have that, uh, uh, paper media as part of the mix since this is something that some fraction of our community does depend on and need and reaches people that the other communications media does not reach. So that concludes my comments. And thanks again to the staff for working to communicate and keep us safe and for City Council for the leadership in this very difficult time. Thank you.
And Mayor Taylor, that concludes our received public comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Mueller?
I was just gonna say, I'd be happy to sit down with Councilmember Nash and our subcommittee with the portions of the EQC who were assigned to meet with us to discuss potential, potential things that could be worked on during the shelter-in-place. And part of the challenge right now is that a lot of the goals that we are looking on are already being sort of implemented by the shelter-in-place when it comes to driving and other things. So, but that doesn't mean that you don't, that you don't create a strategic, a strategic plan. So, and take advantage of, of the thing, take advantage of the moment to, to sort of make, continue, continue momentum. But I do think, I do think we should sit down and talk about how, how the public's expectation may be affected by what's happening right now and also what their appetite will be because of the current situation as well. So, and I think before we start asking staff to engage, we probably should sit down and all get on the same page. So, Councilwoman Nash, if you, if you'd like our subcommittee to sit down with, with those folks again, I'm happy to do it and then come back to our colleagues with the results of that discussion. Does that make sense?
Yes, honestly, they, yes. I met with a subgroup yesterday and that's how this all evolved. And we were going to have a meeting with you, hopefully, later this week, which we hadn't had a chance to set up yet. And yes, they're, they are raring to go and to actually be able to talk to the rest of the EQC and get their input, which they can't do right now because of Brown Act considerations. So, let's, let's talk, yeah.
Yeah, I look, I look forward to talking to them, so.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, two things. I was gonna say that the Sister City Commission is also raring to go.
to go on a lot of different things, and that they can work from home doing and feel they're kind of stopped. Technically, the subcommittee decided that we weren't going to be sending children to Japan, which now seems kind of obvious, but technically, they haven't actually voted on that yet. You know, they're kind of things that haven't been finished and just kind of left in limbo. But the, on kind of on a different topic, but on the same topic as dealing with the city's response to the virus, there was a suggestion that we close the parking alongside Trader Joe's. And I spoke with the Trader Joe's manager today, and they've asked us, please, if we would put up pylons there so that people could more easily take their carts up the side when they queue up to, when they line up to get into Trader Joe's. They feel it would make it safer for people to get in line. And they said, because there's so few people parking now, they don't need the parking so desperately, and have asked the city if they would please just help put the pylons in to stop the parking, to help the flow of people grabbing a cart and getting line flow easier. And I'll just throw that out to the, to the staff. But at this point, I wanted to convey that request from the, from the manager of Trader Joe's.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
Oh, and while I was talking along the same lines, just to make sure that you're in the loop, I've also lobbied the county manager to include the front staff at Trader Joe's and Safeway's and our grocery stores to be included in the priority list of people to be tested, because they're also putting their lives on the line. And God forbid, if something happens that our grocery stores close, that would be catastrophic. And I want to make sure that, I'm told that at this point, there isn't an issue. But if there is an issue, the people in the front of the grocery stores need to make sure that they can get tested quickly as well. And so I am in talks with the county manager and the appropriate people to have those people added in on the list for the priority testing.
Thank you for your advocacy, Councilmember Carlton. Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, you had a follow-up?
I was just gonna say, we'll reach out to the manager at Trader Joe's tomorrow and talk to him.
Thank you. I'm not sure where to start. There's been a lot of discussion. And Councilmember Nash, I appreciate you bringing up the reactivating of one of our commissions. And I like the idea of Vice Mayor Holmes of phasing them in. And so, not to happen right away, but definitely something to think about in the very near future. I do realize that there, we have some committed community members that were active on our commissions up until we sheltered in place and are, and are still doing work. And it would be great to utilize their expertise or to continue to utilize their expertise moving forward with the idea that whatever we, whatever decisions that we make, whatever priorities that we have will reflect the pandemic and what we're experiencing today. Something else, oh, I wanted to ask Chief Bertini, and this is because I've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls just about the gardener. And my question comes from population that has limited mobility. And so, so how does that work if it's, if a safety issue, they would be determining if it's a safety issue, and then they would request for their gardener to do service. But how does it work?
I'm sorry, is the question if a resident has limited mobility and has to get something gardened to be able to get out of their home or something to that effect?
Yes.
Well, that would be a case-by-case basis. Obviously, if it is a, if it is a safety issue, and if it's, if a pathway is so overgrown that they can't get out, obviously, that's a situation where a gardener could come. I would hope that it didn't get, wouldn't get to that point. But if that is the case, then a gardener would be allowed under the order to come and trim whatever the issue, the bushes or the vegetation that is blocking their access.
And have you had a lot of calls regarding complaints regarding gardeners working, leaf blowers blowing?
Yes. Most, most of our complaints, actually, the two major complaints we get on a daily basis are gardeners and children playing. Those are the two major ones.
And is there any opportunity within the health order for cities to have their own guidelines, or is it strict?
Well, I, my understanding is, and Kara Silver can correct me, but I think we could go stricter than the guidelines, but we can't go less strict than what the county guidelines are.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a question for, for Starla Jerome Robinson, our city manager. And this is based on a little bit of what Ms. Adina Levin said. She didn't say this specifically, but I'm just thinking about the idea of having citywide internet, so that we know there are less than 300 houses in Menlo Park that do not have internet. And so, we can't identify them, at least I don't know who they are, but just the idea of making sure that everyone in Menlo Park has access to the internet. Is that possible?
You know, I think that we'd need to talk about that internally. One, but, so, I'm not sure what the suggestion is, that we would provide internet to those 300 homes, or that we'd identify a location where they could go to, to achieve internet?
Either of the two, depending on what's available. But just, I don't know how you would identify who doesn't have it, other than volunteering.
Right. Right. That was my, so I think we could work on, can we report back to the council on that? I hadn't, I didn't know about that question, so we're not prepared to answer it tonight, but we can work on a response to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And then I wanted to follow up with Councilmember Mueller. He's requested to have a discussion about the homeless population. And I know that it was discussed, I believe, two weeks ago, and we decided that it would come back, because the recommendation was that this wasn't the time to try to move a homeless encampment. However, Councilmember Mueller's passion about doing something, so I just wanted to get a feel from the rest of the council on what they see, what they would like to see. Do you want to just stick to what we agreed to and revisit in the summer, or if anyone has any, any concerns that they would like to bring now, and we can agendize it. Councilmember Nash?
So, I would love to be able to do something. My, from our meeting with Life Moves, I guess it was only two weeks ago, it seems like a lot longer. It seems that we've, anyone who is willing to accept service has been helped. And the folks who are still on the street are people who have not accepted services when offered. And so that it's something where there was a concern about putting anyone who was involved in trying to move people at risk, and that it was not.
Guys, can I, so I'm just gonna ask that, you know, Attorney Silver, can I, I think that it's appropriate for you to give council instruction right now about when meetings occur and what we can talk about?
Yes, thank you. So, the council has a closed session on protection of services and facilities. And to the extent we had discussions in that closed session, we should not share discussions in public session.
Okay.
So I think that's what, what Councilmember Mueller was referring to.
Okay, so let me instead say, in the county phone calls that we had yesterday, yesterday, there was discussion about moving, I don't believe within Menlo Park, this is throughout the county, moving people who are currently in homeless encampments. And the decision was, or what the readout was, is that it was not encouraged to move people at this time, because it would be, and the way I heard it was, someone else could hear it differently, please say so, but I heard that they did not think that it would be beneficial to either the individuals or to the communities to be trying to just, to move people at this time into housing when people had not chosen that already, when they've not taken opportunities that were presented.
Councilmember Carlton, did you have a, I saw your hand up?
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, I absolutely understand the rules behind when we have closed sessions and why. And yet, I also understand that we get calls and emails from people, and it looks like we're not doing anything, because we don't really report out what we are doing. And in particular, with some of the homeless people, we are getting a lot of, well, I am, I assume the rest of you are getting calls and emails of concern with one person in particular. And we are trying to do something, and the police are. And so if we can't, I understand we can't really talk about what we talk about in closed session. However, maybe we can have something that comes from staff or the police force or something along those lines, to explain to people the limitations involved, what can be done, what has been done. Because if we just don't say anything, people think we're doing nothing and we don't care. And we do care. We care a lot. And we need to find a way to legally convey that to people in an appropriate way. And I think that's what Councilmember Nash is getting at, and I completely agree with her.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Chief Bertini, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, to Councilmember Nash's point, the county, in collaboration with all the nonprofits, what they're saying is that they have actually emptied out the shelter in the county and put half of those people into hotels. And what they're saying is not that they won't bring in more people, it's that they're not, they're saying not to go and break up encampments right now at this moment, to leave them, if there is a homeless encampment, not that we're talking about that here in Menlo Park, but if there's a homeless encampment, not to break it up at this point, and to disperse those people. The issue about the homeless that I'm, I think we're all talking about downtown, you are correct, Councilmember Carlton, that we have, we speak to her, we and Life Moves and the hot teams speak to her twice a week. Services have been offered over and over again, has been refused. We have no legal ability to force a person into a shelter or anyone else, anywhere else at this point. And unfortunately, that's where we're at. But we do, we are speaking to those people and outreach to those people all the time. And as far as staff is concerned, we've probably had during the beginning, during this pandemic's period, we've probably spent dozens of hours speaking of homeless. So it's something that we are very cognizant of.
Maybe, maybe we can have a letter, something that we can send to the people that are concerned, that is an appropriate response, to let people know that we are aware and we are trying to do things. I don't know if that maybe should come from the mayor when we get something that, of that subject that comes to CCIN. But I just feel like we should really respond if, if we can, to the degree we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I did follow up with the city manager regarding the post on CCIN about having a regular update from Ms. Kaufman. And I'm not sure how soon that will happen, but it is coming. So, Councilmember Mueller, did you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up, because candidly, guys, I'm just not on this page anymore. So the reason why we don't talk about things that happen in closed session is because it's very dangerous to identify people who may, or situations that may be talked about, because it can expose people to, the city to liability for invading people's public privacy rights. So we need to always protect that. Secondarily, on the homeless issue, I actually disagree with whether or not we have the right legally to intervene here, based on the Ninth Circuit Court of, based on our recent Ninth Circuit opinion. We actually can, we can actually take action where there is shelter available to tell a homeless, to tell a person who is homeless, if there's shelter available, you need to accept it. And there's a Ninth Circuit opinion that allows for that. The question that we have in front of us right now in this ongoing public health crisis is different than it was even a week ago or two weeks ago, in that just last week, a number of homeless individuals who were in a shelter were diagnosed with COVID, and it spread amongst their population. And it's, and what they did in San Francisco, which was a mistake, was that they put them in congregant, to a congregant shelter. However, what it showed was, a homeless person is vulnerable and to getting COVID, and spread, and not only getting it, but spreading it, which we all knew to begin with. And it shows why, which led to the concern, why are we leaving them on the street to be exposed to the public every day? And, and not only to be exposed to the public, but also to expose the public as well. So, you know, candidly, as the, as the crisis continues, the question that we're faced with is, are we going to try to, are we going to adapt to the levers that are in front of us? And so, for example, and I'll just be candid, one of the things that I've been looking at is, can you do an urgency ordinance, which is compassionate, which is not a criminal penalty, but would be a civil penalty, that was waived, that was waived once the person accepted shelter, that candidly was constructed only so that it could be an arrow in the social worker and police officer's quiver when dealing with that, that member of the homeless population to say, hey, there's actually a law, you need to accept shelter if shelter is available. That would be so, that would be so, so limited in application and penalty, that would be waived once they accept shelter, that it wouldn't be something injurious to the homeless person, to the member of the homeless population at all, but rather be compassionate with a member of the public who frankly just needs help, who needs our help. And it's frustrating that, it's just increasingly frustrating that we are left to say, well, our, you know, our hands are tied, or the county's hands are tied, or this is tied, when we just, I feel like we can, as the crisis continues, we might be able to take another step. And so that's why, you know, it's something I'd love to be able to talk with you all again. I'd love to be able to show you all what an ordinance could look like to address it. And even if the ordinance was something that was not necessarily able to be put in place immediately, we, I think we need to continue moving that direction, because candidly, it's, I, it's just, it's just not acceptable. I just can't, knowing what recently happened in San Francisco, it's just, I can't, I can't sit there and say, well, our hands are tied. So, and that's just where I am on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I have just been alerted that we need to vote to extend the meeting.
So moved.
I am a no vote.
I have a first by Councilmember Carlton. I have a second by Councilmember Nash. So as a roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash? Councilmember Nash? Councilmember Nash, your vote? There we go. Take the thumbs up. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
No.
Super majority.
A happy no.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so.
I'm not making a motion because it hasn't been agendized, but I would like to request that we take the issue of, of the homeless as defined just now by Councilmember Mueller. And we bring that back as an item to be discussed and considered and acted upon as soon as possible. And with that.
I support it being agendized.
Thank you. To, to move swiftly on, do you, are you looking for a motion to vote on G3?
I don't believe we need a vote. This is an update.
As a regular business item, that's what I'm saying, if we're, just in the interest of moving on, if you need, if you.
Can I just add, I don't know if it's a civil penalty or what it would be, or, or how it would work. But I wanted, I would like to work with the city attorney to bring back some sort of ordinance that could be used as a tool with our police and social services to try to expedite this issue.
Ray, I just, I just asked that it be agendized, and Mayor Taylor disagreed.
Thank you.
In terms of further action tonight, this is, this was agendized at the mayor's request to update the council. Other than the motion to have, have the staff come back on the urgency ordinance, there's no action necessary.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is H1, is the informational items? Are there any public comment on the informational items? Ms. Heron?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I have not received any via web form at this time. If there's any members of the public who have joined our webinar, please use that hand feature to raise your hand. And we can call on you, open your mic, and you can give your public comment at this time. Seeing none, Mayor Taylor, I will return the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council on anything on the informational items, H1, H2, or H3? Okay, then we can move on. The next item on the agenda is Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Carlton?
In an effort to support one of our small businesses, Cheeky Monkey, the Ronald McDonald House has said they would love to have unwrapped toys for young children and for teens as well. And anyone who would like to make donations to Ronald McDonald House can go to Cheeky Monkey's online place, and we're doing a toy drive. And anybody who wants to buy toys, it helps our small business. It helps the, the families with sick children at Ronald McDonald House. And Anna's going, who's the owner of Cheeky Monkey, is going to do a, a delivery of the toy to Ronald McDonald House. So I was just gonna let people know that that was just a fun thing we put together to try and, and support businesses downtown.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And I just realized that I did skip over the city manager's report. Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson?
Thank you. I, I don't have any report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and it goes along, I guess, with the discussion about the Environmental Quality Commission. So I just wanted to share, I was brought into a discussion at the county to go ahead and start a, to look at bringing, bringing together a group of cities that would be a sort of a, a policy forward group on environmental issues that would work with the county to go ahead and adopt model ordinances or, or work to develop model ordinances for that group, for that group of cities' consideration. So that they could go ahead and sort of be the group of cities that were a little more forward leaning on, on environmental issues. So was invited into that discussion and wanted to report back to you all on it to make sure that you all were okay with it. But there is a, a list of cities coming together on that. And then something more formal will be coming to the city for its consideration to be a formal part of that group.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Are there any other councilmember reports? Well, I have a report, and I, Ms. Heron, you popped on the screen, so.
I apologize for the interruption. Just before we adjourn, we can do this after you report out. We will have to do a report from closed session.
That's right. Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, would you like to report out from closed session?
Yes, there is no report out from closed session. No action is taken.
Thank you. Okay, so for my report out, it's actually, it's, it's extensive, but I will do my best to make it short, but still have some detail. So the county briefing, which is called the Elected Officials Daily Briefing, actually happens on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 12:30. And essentially, we're, we're given regular updates by the county manager about what's happening related to COVID-19. The second is, out of the daily briefings, I asked to be put on a strategic planning committee. That strategic planning committee has created seven subgroups. One is preparing for a secondary natural disaster. The second is education and childcare services. The third is triggers of lifting shelter in place. The fourth, delivering resources to shelter in place population. The fifth, economic recovery, financial impact planning. The sixth is preparing for a second wave of COVID-19. And the seventh is planning for underserved populations. The beginning part started today, actually yesterday, two yesterday, and then five meetings today out of that strategic planning committee, which is one of the reasons why I was a no vote to extend the meeting. But I just wanted to let you all know, the council and the public know what's happening behind the scenes, that it's actually moving pretty rapidly, which is one of the reasons why this is the first time that I've brought it up is because things are in warp speed now. The next I would like to report out on is that I created a council of churches because of this pandemic. And the idea was to connect all of our pastors together on the different churches, because it seemed to be the fastest way to actually share information with the larger, with a larger population. It's nine churches, totals somewhere around 1,200 to 1,400 residents in Menlo Park. And so for the past four weeks, we've met on Saturdays via Zoom, just to talk about the church's need. My biggest concern was identifying community members that live alone, that are disabled, elderly. They don't have anybody checking in on them. So that was the initial goal. But what has actually come out of it is unification of love and concern of community. And it has been a very uplifting experience for me. I'm hoping, I know that we all have lots of things on our plates already, but I'm hoping that we can do it throughout the city. And so we have, you know, three elected representatives from a district. However, there's a district that doesn't have anybody. And so I was just trying to figure out a fair way to ask, if you didn't represent your own district, where would you, where would you want to be? Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. We, we've had this good discussion before. I actually represent that district, as does Mayor Mueller. At this point, we represent the entire city. We were not elected into districts. And the creation of districts didn't take us and, and put us into one. So we do represent the city at large, and there is no citizen of Menlo Park who's not being represented.
The intention didn't have anything to do with whether or not somebody was represented. I'm looking at the city in five parts because we do have five districts. And how can we create a council of churches within every district that would eventually be unified into one body? So.
Okay.
I'm talking about what I did to reach, to do outreach and into my community because I thought it was the efficient way to reach more people. And so I just, and I've had interest from other churches in Menlo Park. I don't have the capacity to do it. So if we all did it collectively, I think it would work well. So just wanted to know what your thoughts are, if you're interested, if you're not interested.
Sure, but between me and my husband, we're actually active in two churches in Menlo Park. So I'm happy to help if you need a liaison to Bethany Lutheran or Trinity, which is right across from our offices.
Thank you. Let me see. Councilmember Nash?
I'm wondering, what are you thinking of that we would be doing? And sort of, do you, I'm wondering, what, what are you, what are you envisioning?
So what I'm envisioning is that, I know that in some cities that there is, and it's not referred to as a council of churches, it's, it's some type of body that encompasses all of the different faith organizations. And so in, in light of not being able to, to go door to door, what's a faster way of communication? And then also that piece, the reassuring piece, that, that community members use their faith as, as far as when you're dealing with hard times, you, you use your faith actually to keep yourself grounded. So I just thought that having something like this would be beneficial to the city. So it's just, I don't know how many churches are, are in total in the city of Menlo Park. I've only communicated with nine, but just looking at the rest of the city, so how would it work? My area is, is smaller, but has more in it as far as the number of churches. I don't know what the rest of the city looks like. So just trying to figure out how to rebuild community connections, community communications. And to me, the churches seem like the low hanging fruit.
I, yeah. I find this conversation a little awkward, very honestly. I think that it leaves out a large number of people. It's not that I don't, I, I realize this is one way of communicating. I've already had some feedback from people who've been texting me just now. Just. I'd love to hear what other people say, think about it, and perhaps we could talk about it next meeting.
That, that works well for me. It just, this, building this body for me was helpful with doing outreach. So maybe it doesn't work everywhere, which is fine as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just if I can make sure, as you sort of, as I take it, and please let me know if it's not accurate. It seems as you were sort of presenting this as something informal, right? That, that, you know, us as councilmembers, to the extent that we were interested in, could take the lead in our individual communities, but certainly not something that would have some official stamp of the city or, but, but that we as, as sort of leaders in our individual communities in the city could, could possibly use as a resource for, for connecting with, with residents and, and getting some understanding of where they are in their lives. But please correct me if you, if you saw it differently, but that's how I was taking it.
Yes. It's nothing official with the stamp of the city. This is just about, you know, community leadership. And on that note, that was my last council report out. So since there's no other questions or comments, I guess this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.